Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. We pray tonight for a safe and flourishing community, recognizing the serious challenges we face and continually searching for solutions. We pledge to work for a community where we honor and learn from our past, where our leaders make sound decisions for both today and the future, where we listen to and learn from our citizens, and where neighbors learn to work together and care for each other. We ask for guidance in our decision-making so we will be good stewards of our resources. We pray that the city of Suffolk may be a place where all citizens thrive and where all are welcomed and valued. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of May the 7th, 2025 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 is presented at this time. Now therefore be it resolved that to the city of, uh, the city council, the city of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the city council, the city of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Counsel, a motion would be in order with your pleasure. Councilmember Bennett?
Boo.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bennett. Councilmember Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to approval of the minutes from the January 2nd, 2025 reorganization meeting and January 15th, 2025 work session. And a motion would be in order. Counsel. Councilmember Williams move to approve. Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk kindly record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
I will now move to special presentations. We do have four this evening. Our first is a proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, tonight we do have four proclamations presented. The first proclamation is in recognition of the National Public Works Week, which extends from May 18th through May 24th throughout the United States. Here to accept the proclamation is Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vitally important to the sustainable and resilient communities. And whereas, these valuable employees contribute significantly to improving and preserving public health, quality of life, and well-being of the residents of Suffolk. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be possible without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, solid waste systems, and public buildings. And whereas, the community can gain knowledge about the operations and importance of public works through Suffolk's various citizen engagement programs. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week and call upon all residents to recognize the contributions of our public works professionals to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Suffolk to be affixed this 7th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025.
So all my public works staff in here, if you guys would join me at the podium?
Yeah, we had a couple comments?
First off, could all the members who have attended the Public Works Academy either this year or in the past, please say in the audience?
Thank you. Uh, tonight I'd like to offer just a few comments before we leave. Before you on your podium tonight, you each found a hat, a pen, and a sticker. And you'll notice on there, it talks about public works first responders. So public first, public works first responders are the backbone of our community's infrastructure. We are a team of skilled engineers, technician, road and repair specialists, refuge employees, stormwater specialists, bridge maintenance and repair skilled employees, mosquito control experts, and other skilled employees who respond at a moment's notice, recover the scene of an incident, and restore important infrastructure and services when emergencies happen. Public works first responders are as critical to first response as our public safety personnel, brothers and sisters. In Virginia, public works personnels are recognized as first responders by the action of President George W. Bush in 2003 through Homeland Security Presidential Directive 8 and Governor Glenn Youngkin in 2023 through Executive Order 38. We play a crucial role in emergency response, often being among the first to arrive at a scene of a disaster and emergency. Our expertise and skills in infrastructure management and restoration are vital for restoring essential services and protecting our community. Some of the key responsibilities we have during emergency response, public works employees again are often among the first to respond in natural disasters, utility outages, and other emergencies. In infrastructure restoration, public works employees are essential in restoring essential services like power, water, roads, communications, and such after an emergency. In hazard management, public works employees are responsible for assessing and mitigating hazards related to infrastructure such as road closures, debris removal, and flood control. And in public safety, person, public works personnel play a vital role in ensuring public safety by responding to emergencies, restoring essential services, and providing support to other first responders. Further, the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice System, which is known as DCJS, provides training and resources to support the wellness of first responders, including public works employees. And Executive Order 38 by the governor, which established the Office of First Responder Wellness further reinforces the importance of public works and emergency response work. In summary, public works employees in Virginia are not just infrastructure managers. We are also essential first responders who play a vital role in protecting and supporting our community during emergencies. It's not glamorous, and it's definitely most often dirty work, but it's important and cannot be denied. Public works represents an essential function in protecting our citizens and community in ways that no other agency provides. And as we like to say in public works, we got this. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Mayor, our second proclamation is in recognition of the National Police Officer Memorial Week, which extends from May 11th through May 17th throughout the United States. With us this evening to accept the proclamation is Police Chief James Bowie.
Madam Clerk, we please read the proclamation.
Whereas, the United States Congress and the President declared May the 14th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas, the city of Suffolk joins the nation in honoring the memory of those officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their communities. And whereas, the city of Suffolk would like to express its gratitude to the city's law enforcement officers for their contributions to Suffolk's quality of life. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim May 11th through May 17th, 2025, as National Police Officer Memorial Week and call upon all citizens to appreciate the contributions of our law enforcement officers for keeping Suffolk safe. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Suffolk to be affixed this 7th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025.
Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Ward, and distinguished members of council and city manager. First of all, I want to say on behalf of the Suffolk Police Department how thankful we are, we are for this proclamation recognizing the week of May 11th through May 17th of 2025 as National Police Memorial Week. Police work is one of them rare occupations that each day you go to work, you don't, you, you never know what you're gonna get. You know, it could be a day of absolutely nothing's going on. It can be a day of total chaos. And these men and women are the men and women that when chaos erupts, when everybody else is going in one direction, they're going in the opposite direction to confront the chaos. I would ask everyone to please keep all law enforcement officers throughout the country in your thoughts and prayers as they work tires tirelessly to keep us all safe. My family included, we're able to sleep at night because I know police officers like these men and women are out doing their job keeping us all safe. During this week, I would ask for a special prayer for the families of the five Suffolk police officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Those five being Patrolman G.T. Smith, Chief W.E. Brinkley, Patrolman J.S. Pratt, Patrolman W.A. Henley, and Sergeant J.R. Rivera. If everyone would please, if, if I'm able to, please join me in a quick moment of silence with these gentlemen. I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Mayor, our third proclamation is recognition of Drinking Water Week, which extends from May 4th through May 10th throughout the United States. With us this evening to accept the proclamation are the Director of Public Utilities, Paul Rattell, and Water Quality Technician, Robin Whitley, and other members of the utility staff.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Whereas, water is, is a valuable natural resource. And whereas, drinking water is vital to life and hydration is essential, an essential component of good health and hygiene. And whereas, the hard work of bringing potable water to our citizenry is performed by those who design capital projects, operate equipment, maintain water lines and infrastructure, and analyze the safety and quality of drinking water. And whereas, clean and safe tap water is essential for maintaining public health, providing fire protection, supporting the economy, and enhancing our quality of life. And whereas, the American Water Works Association has established Drinking Water Week. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim the month of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Drinking Water Week and call upon all residents to celebrate the dedicated City of Suffolk staff who worked diligently to bring high-quality drinking water to its water utility customers. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Suffolk to be affixed this 7th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025.
Good evening, uh, council, uh, city manager, staff. Just say a few words, if I could have our staff come up that's present tonight from the Department of Public Utilities, just to say a few words. While they're coming up here, I wanted to say a few things about Robin. One of the reasons that Robin has accepted this proclamation for the department is because she really has the passion for outreach, for drinking water, for safe drinking water. She's done a lot of work out in the community, whether at universities or schools, to get the word out there where our water comes from, our water sources. So Robin is a water quality technician at the G. Robert House Water Treatment Plant. Has been there many years. I'm not gonna throw you under the bus, Robin. But she is involved, heavily involved in doing those tests every day, hundreds and hundreds of tests to assure that our drinking water meets all drinking water standards. So that water starts its journey at the G. Robert House Water Treatment Plant, but it doesn't end there. So the folks that you see standing here represent other divisions that were within our department that are involved in delivering water to the tap, whether that's, uh, whether that's customer service that handles interactions with our customers, answers their questions, metering, billing, things of that nature, or its line maintenance that actually handles the assets, the pipelines that are underground, handles the water main breaks. Those are the people that are out there at 3 o'clock in the morning when it's 20 degrees outside. Or whether it's engineering and construction, those that plan our assets and the improvements in our CIP projects. But all those people, and it is an absolute privilege to work with them. Good group of people, lots of sharing across the divisions. We don't have any silos. They talk together constantly, and it's, it's great to work with them. So if you can give them a round of applause, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Manager, I think we got one more.
Yes, sir. Um, our final proclamation this evening is recognition of Foster Care Awareness Month, which extends through the month of May. Uh, with us this evening to accept the proclamation is Toria Taylor and Brandy Miller representing the Department of Social Services.
Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation.
Whereas, children are our most valuable resource and have the right to safe, healthy, and nurturing environments that provide equitable access to opportunities to thrive in their communities. And whereas, our economy, health, environment, and social fabric are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas, young people may experience circumstances that require the intervention of foster care professionals and foster families can provide safe, loving, and stable homes for these children, offering them the opportunity to flourish. And whereas, effective foster care services are possible because of the dedication of child welfare professionals, educators, community-based nonprofit groups, volunteers, and the legal community. And whereas, the month of May is designated as National Foster Care Month, a time to raise awareness and celebrate the dedication of foster families and the children they serve. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Foster Care Awareness Month in Suffolk, Virginia, and call upon all residents to support this worthwhile observance. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Suffolk to be affixed this 7th day of May in the year of our Lord 2025.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, city manager, and staff. I have with me, uh, this evening, Ms. Toria Taylor, who is the Assistant Director of Services, which will, will share some information with you. Now, the city manager announced it would be Ms. Toria Taylor and Brandy Miller. I am not Brandy Miller. However, she had an emergency, uh, so she had to, she couldn't be here tonight. So I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor kind of share with you why Foster Care Recognition Month is so important.
We do have a couple of staff persons here from Social Services. Can I ask them to come forward? So while we're, while they're joining us, um, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Ward, distinguished council persons, and all of the staff, thank you so much for letting me come before you again. Um, I was just here last month asking you to recognize Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Um, and I'm here this month asking you to recognize Foster Care Awareness Month. I'm really, really passionate about the families and the children that we serve, so I'll try not to go on and on. But what I will say is, we talked last month about how over 1,000 children are named in, um, abuse and neglect allegations every year here in Suffolk. At any given time, some of those children are experiencing abuse and neglect like you cannot imagine. We walk into homes and those children are unsafe. Their families are unable to care for them. And because of that, we have to take custody of them. Right now, there are 40 children in the city of Suffolk who are in the custody of this city and of the department. As we move forward with all of the laws and all of the things that we're, we're obligated to do, I ask that you remember these children and not let them become invisible. They need families, and in the meantime, they have us. Sorry, but we're the best they can do for right now. But please do not forget the work that we have to do to protect our children and families here in Suffolk.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of city council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding Consent Agenda Number 7. Mr. Manager, please provide city council with an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Member, Members of Council, at your work session today, you received a detailed presentation and a revised ordinance to amend Chapter 38 Fire Protection, Prevention, and Protection of the Code of the City of Suffolk to coincide with the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code. It is necessary to remove the previous ordinance under Item 7 of the consent agenda and for city council to consider the revised ordinance under ordinances later in tonight's meeting. At this time, I would ask city council's consideration of a motion to remove Item 7 from the consent agenda and place a new ordinance under ordinances for consideration and adopt, adopt the remainder agenda as presented.
Council motion would be in order to amend the agenda to remove Consent Agenda Number 7 for separate vote under ordinances and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented. Councilmember Wright?
I move to remove Consent Agenda Item Number 7.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Rector?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second from Councilmember Rector. Is there any discussion of the motion?
And that's to also to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented?
As amended.
As presented. Great. Thank you for clarifying.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Hearing none, please present the consent agenda.
Consent Agenda Item Number Eight, a resolution to cancel a project under the Revenue Sharing Funding Program for fiscal years 2025 to 2028. Consent Agenda Item Number Nine, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Revenue Sharing Funding Program for fiscal years 2029 and 2030. Consent Agenda Item Number Ten, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Transportation Alternative Funding Program for fiscal year 2027. Consent Agenda Item Number Eleven, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a change order to an agreement with Dominion Energy, Virginia, for the Nansman Parkway-Bennett's Pasture Road Intersection Project. And Consent Agenda Item Number Twelve, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a change order to an agreement with Dominion Energy, Virginia, for the Shoulders Hill Road Route 17 Intersection Project.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, in regards to Item Eight, at your work session this afternoon, City Council received a staff report on several public works road projects. Due to tax escalating costs, the Kimberly Bridge Project was recommended to be canceled and removed from the Revenue Sharing Funding Program for fiscal years 25 to 28. In regards to Item Nine, is a resolution to endorse applications of FY29 and FY30 Revenue Sharing Funding Programs for additional project funding. Additional funding requests are for the Guyland Boulevard widening, Route 10 Route 58 diverging diamond intersection, and the Route 17 roadway widening projects. In regard to Item Ten, is a resolution to endorse project applications under the FY27 Transportation Alternative Funding Programs for the Suffolk Seaboard Coastline Trail Segment West and the Route 17 Multi-Use Path. In regards to Item Eleven, is a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute a change order in amount of $622,248 to the Dominion Energy estimated cost related to the relocation of their facilities as part of the Nansman Parkway-Bennett's Pasture Road Intersection Project. Change orders greater than 25% of the original contract amount require City Council approval. In regards to Item Twelve, which is similar to Item Eleven, is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a change order in amount of $364,508 to Dominion Energy Agreement related to the relocation of their facilities at the Shoulders Hill Road Route 17 Intersection Project. Again, change orders greater than 25% of the original contract amount require City Council approval.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Move to approve.
Get a motion for approval, Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Bennett, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one public hearing this evening, which is to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 citywide effective real estate tax increase due to reassessments of 4.71%. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the Director of Finance, Charles Meek, will provide the staff report. Charles?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Section 58.1-3321 of the Code of Virginia requires localities to hold a public hearing or reduce the real estate tax rate if reassessment excluding new construction results in an increase of 1% or greater of the previous year's total real property tax levies. The total assessed value of real property due to reassessment for fiscal year 25-2026 exceeded the preceding fiscal year total by 4.71% excluding new construction. A reduction of 3.8 cents to $1.32 per hundred would be necessary to offset the growth in tax levies in fiscal year 2025-2026 to no more than a 1% increase over the previous year's total. The proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 operating in capital budget is based on maintaining the real estate tax rate at $1.07 per $100 of assessed value. After conducting the public hearing and considering public comments, City Council may consider adoption of the fiscal year 2025-2026 operating in capital budget and related ordinances including the real estate tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing, will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Keon Lindsay, 307 Black Pine Court, here in Suffolk. My family came to Suffolk in 1987, I then moved around with the Navy, and permanently came back home to Suffolk in 2022 from Northern Virginia to be near my then 86-year-old dad. I expected the cost of living to be lower, and it was just a little bit, except for Suffolk's property taxes and excessive water rates, but I put those financial woes on the back burner while focusing on my dad's health, thankfully he's now 88, and trying to take care of my own family, but after seeing the proposed assessed value of my house and the huge jump in the tax bill, I had to speak out. I came to the last City Council meeting and heard the budget proposal. At the meeting, several members of the Council, and even you, Mr. Mayor, acknowledged that real estate taxes have gone up quite a bit, yet the proposed budget had no consideration to give overburdened taxpayers any relief whatsoever. Why do I say taxpayers are overburdened? In my neighborhood, real estate taxes are up 35% in the last four years. Just because home values rise doesn't mean we should be paying more in taxes. Blaming assessments is not right because the assessor does not set the tax rate, you do. The people of Suffolk need you to embrace the motto, when assessments go up, the tax rate must come down. I did a random assessment, a random sample of houses across the city and found people are paying about 34% more in real estate taxes than four years ago, so it's not just my neighborhood, and if you'd like to see where my numbers come from, I have a few copies of information for you. I wonder, do you know anyone who's gotten a 34% pay raise in the last four years? I don't. City revenue from real estate taxes is up $53 million in these last four years, and overall budget expenditures are up 37%. But are we getting 37% more services? Are there 37% more police, firefighters, or teachers? Are there 37% more roads to handle the nightmare traffic situations we have in the city? No. What's wrong with this picture? You may say inflation has increased and the cost to run the city, yes, things cost more, but not 37% more. Spending taxpayer money just because it's available is not right or fair. We elected you to be good stewards of the city and run it wisely, not spend all of our money. The citizens of Suffolk need you to do the right thing, when assessments go up, the tax rate must come down. Please do your duty, lower the tax rate, and wisely reduce expenditures. A reasonable tax real estate rate of 83 cents per hundred would give you 15% more in real estate revenue than 2021, which should more than make up for inflation that jumped after the pandemic. If you don't think that's enough, please get more from the developers who are overcrowding our roads and schools and leaving us with the bill. Please realize, these taxes and budgets aren't just numbers on paper, they affect real people and are hurting families. It hurts businesses also. For example, my kids and I love barbecue, there's an exciting new barbecue restaurant on Route 17 that we're not going to because real estate taxes are taking too big a bite out of my budget. Please remember that when assessments go up, real estate tax rate must come down. Thank you.
We have our next speaker, please.
Good evening, Travis McKenney, 2804 Lake Kahuna Point. I'm gonna echo a lot, excuse me, I'm not gonna echo a lot what the previous speaker said, except for my home values have gone up 26% in the last three years, and between all the taxes, property taxes, real taxes and everything, I have to set aside roughly $750 a month just to pay the property taxes and the real estate taxes I owe to Suffolk. I haven't figured out what I'm getting for the services in the area where I've lived in the last eight years, we've had two ambulances and one call for fire, and others across the street, someplace else. I still live off of Goat Path Road that's unmarked, I still avoid, have to avoid idiots racing up and down my roads doing 55, 60 miles an hour with kids right out there riding bikes. I haven't seen any police out there, no insult, but I haven't seen any police out there trying to slow traffic down, or at least trying to pay attention to people burning, you know, marks in the road and stuff like that. So what I'm getting for my services, for my tax dollar, isn't quite worth the bang for the buck. But to put it in perspective, if you go back to the CPI and your value, if you bought something for $100 at the beginning of 2021, that same purchase today would cost you $136. That's a big impact, not just myself, but to everybody, and that's just core, you know, core values. You put in the inflation for gas, inflation for food, and everything else that's going on out there, and the possibility that maybe we'll fall off a cliff to political things going on in the near future, that puts a lot of stress on a family. You know, I started with a family of five, I'm down to a family of three, I've lost a couple of my tax deductions, and trust me, when I sit there and see a 25% jump, or 26.8% jump in my real estate taxes over a three-year period, or averaging 8.5 year-over-year, that hurts. That's a real hard bargain, you know, now, gentlemen propose all kinds of tax rates and stuff like that, I've heard the city sit there, and the last time I popped in and talked to y'all that you guys actually had a surplus, so I think a nice little tax break would be more than prudent, I think, for the time being, because again, the future of what we're looking at, you know, they're predicting maybe a 3% inflationary rate this year, but there's a lot of uncertainty out there, and that causes a lot of stress to a lot of people out there in the real world, you know, they have to get up and get out, make it day by day, right? So any consideration that you're talking about lowering the tax rate, I hope it's a little bit more significant than .32, because that may have to saves me 20 bucks a month. Okay, appreciate that offer. I'd like to see if you guys could dig a little bit deeper and maybe give a bigger tax incentive to the taxpayers in Suffolk, and it's all about growth, I can't see how that wouldn't incentivize a little bit of growth as well. Y'all have a good night, thank you.
We have our next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council, my name is Kelly Hingler, I am from the Chuketuck Borough in the north, most northwest sector of Suffolk, and I'm at 9345 Eclipse Drive. When we purchased our house, it was in that era, around 2017, 2018, where the older homes, the new Dominion-era homes that were built until 1990 after World War II, had not had restoration, and we dumped $100,000 under our roof and thought we did well. We did not know that in the year 2018, that the city was going up 4 cents in tax. I was on the road a lot, Chris was on the road a lot, working, working hard, and we looked up the next year. We didn't really calculate it, we thought, oh, well, maybe that's a leftover from the reappraisal or reassessment, didn't realize it went up $1.11, you know, to $1.11. That stuck in 2019, 2020, and it wasn't until 2021, when we had come through the pandemic, everybody, praise God, for those of us who have lived through it, and at the end of that, the tax was up 4%, not the tax, but the reassessments. Then people were in screaming condition, so 2 cents was offered. I appreciate my Virginia, I have served it well, and so has five generations of my family in the military, but I have to beg on the breast of this council, and I sent you that email, that this is the year that the realization of the people of 1% higher than last year is realized, and that's actually $1.02 per 100, the calculation in public notice is incorrect, because everyone has been living on the last 1% from the last year. As the assessments themselves go up, and the city does have, I'm not going to get into the budget because the state and its intelligence has made sure that this public hearing is actually about our taxation, our constitutional right for our taxation, and these inflationary times, we understand, belt tightening. Last year, VDOT was very kind, every year, they hold an annual meeting, and they said then, because of inflationary costs with projects that were going on, they were going to have to look at pulling some, clawing some projects back. I think everywhere that you look, everyone is clawing back, and they're still giving because that's the heart of Suffolk, but this year, 1% higher on this reassessed rate of 4.71% needs to be met with $1.02 per hundred. We need to keep giving in the community, we need to keep making sure that those food banks are filled that are not being filled up, that we are able to give what we can give, how we've always given, and there are those who are strained right now, and we're trying to reach out to help them, and we're trying to reach out to help ourselves at the same time. So I beg on the breast of this council, I truly do, that this be the year that we live to the spirit of the law of 1% for the people. Thank you for your time.
We have our next speaker, please.
William Webb, 810 Dumbell Avenue. Mayor Dooman, Members of Council, and fellow residents, I stood up here three weeks ago and provided counsel with several data points concerning the ever-increasing budget, property tax bills, and the need to lower the property tax rate. Tonight, I will try to address some of the feedback the mayor provided in that meeting. I might not get to everything, unfortunately, Mayor, you spoke for over 14 minutes and I only get three, but I'll try to hit the important stuff. First, let's set the stage for what a property tax rate reduction would cost. A 2-cent reduction would cost 3.3 million, 4 cents, 6.6, and a 6-cent reduction would just under $10 million. Now, Mayor Dooman, in your remarks, you seem to focus on the general fund. You opined that a surplus was when you take care of all of your needs and you have money left over. Using that approach and information from Mr. Meeks, FY22 had a surplus of $26,245,010. FY23 was $33,847,088. FY24 was $27,903,492. So over the last three fiscal years, using your definition, the city had a general fund surplus of over $87 million. According to the city's annual comprehensive financial report, both the unassigned fund, over $106 million, and the budget stabilization fund, over $13 million, have been fully funded for several years, which you mentioned during the joint session with the school board. Excess money over and above these funds totaling more than $61 million have been placed into the capital reserve fund. So what do all those numbers mean? It means that the city is sitting on hundreds of millions of dollars that it can access during the times of need, with these excess fund balances growing by tens of millions of dollars each year. Mayor Dooman, you asked if we wanted less cops and less firefighters, but truthfully, that isn't necessary. The city could reduce the property tax rate by 6 cents by just refraining from giving the departments more money than what they asked for. For FY23-24, the last year that we have complete budget and expenditure data, the 40 city departments had an overall budget of $165,652,655. That year, the department's total expenditures were $161,687,659. That comes out to just over $4 million left over. As we see year after year, the city departments cannot spend all the money that you give them. If the city budget adopted the lower of either the department's request and their individual budget request, or what the city manager has recommended, whichever one is less, that would total $10,621,450 in savings. There's your 6-cent reduction right there. Mayor Dooman, you stated that if the general fund surplus ended up at 5% or less of the expenditures, that's good budgeting. For the past three fiscal years, the general fund surplus has ended up at 11.3% for FY22, 13.3% for FY23, and 11.5% for FY24, far exceeding your recommended 5% buffer. The overage above your 5% threshold averaged out to $18.2 million per year, which is enough to fund a 10-cent reduction in the property tax rate. Mayor Dooman, you asked for suggestions on where to cut, and these are just a few of the low-hanging fruit. The question isn't if there's sufficient funding to reduce the property tax rate, that part is clearly yes. The question is whether council has the courage to do so, to return these excess funds back to taxpayers, and not just rubber stamp this budget on through. Thank you for your time.
We have our next speaker, please.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak during this comment period? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. There's no action necessary at this time as the ordinance to effectuate the real estate rate for fiscal year 2425 is included in item number 14. Item number 14 is an ordinance regarding the adoption of the proposed operating and capital budget for fiscal year 202526 and its related ordinances. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, of course, as you recall, in your April 2nd work session, Director of Finance provided a detailed presentation of the city manager's proposed FY202526 operating capital budget. At your April 16th city council meeting, city council received comments during the scheduled public hearing. At this time, the Director of Finance, Charles Meeks, will again provide a brief presentation or brief overview of the proposed FY2025 operating capital budget highlights prior to your consideration. Charles?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The proposed fiscal year 202526 operating capital budget across all 17 funds is proposed at $942,652,843. It's an 8% increase over the previous year. We started the budget process back in November. I'm culminating here tonight with your consideration for adoption. Just some reminder of some highlights in the budget. We're not proposing a tax rate increase to the real estate tax rate. We're investing in employees with the 3% cost of living adjustment and step increases, providing critical staffing needs, including fire and rescue, police, the sheriff's office, the library and many other departments. Absorbing the cost of four new school resource officers in the police department and proposing a $5.8 million increase in funding for the operations of Suffolk Public School. There are a number of investments in capital improvements included in the capital fund budget that would provide quality of life enhancements throughout the city. And with that, council may consider adoption of the operating capital budget in related ordinances and will stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Council, before-mentioned ordinances presented for your consideration, questions, comments or a motion? Councilman Johnson.
I'm going to go first and maybe I'll be the only one that has these concerns. Every year, we go through this process and I have to say that the budget this year as presented to us has been one of the most realistic, honest budgets I think I've ever seen. I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the way we're spending money or that we need to spend this money or that we're going to pay our bills. What I am concerned about is that there's one item left out of this budget and that item, to me, was the taxpayer. The reassessments are a real thing and I don't think that was addressed in the budget as it should have been. I've thought about this long and hard and I didn't sleep last night because of the damn thing and I got to sleep tonight. I personally cannot approve this budget without making some kind of a tax relief program back to the public. Now, we're going to allow tax relief for the elderly, for people that can't afford it. There's all kinds of things that we're going to be able to help people with. But this doesn't help the people out there that have a 35% assessment value that are struggling to make their tax payments. I kind of agree with the young man that said, when assessments go up, taxes should go down. I'm sorry, but I feel the same way. It is an opportunity for us, city, to continue to grow. And don't believe you me, we've got a lot of real needs coming forward with the schools we've got to build and the way the world is changing. I'm very concerned about the uncertainty of what we're coming forward to in the next year. But I don't think that allowing a two-cent, only a two cents is all I'm asking, decrease in our taxes is going to make that big a difference. It's only three, only, can you believe I'm saying this, $3,300,000, that's what it's going to cost the city if we do this. I truly think the taxpayers deserve it and I truly think that we should be on a downward spiral as far as reducing taxes in a year that we can. I'm sorry I've played it this long. I've talked to the city manager many, many times. I've brought this up more than once, but the tendency is to, we need this money to progress forward in the future. I, I don't dispute that we're going to need, we may need more than what we have now with whatever's going to come forward this year. I'm concerned. Tonight, we've heard the highway costs have gone up double in some cases as to what they were. We've got to deal with that in the future and who knows what's going to come forward. But for the moment and for this budget, I can't approve it as it is. I'm sorry. I think that we owe the taxpayers a little bit of leniency here. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Counsel, comments? Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. I agree with some of the comments that was made by Councilman Johnson. After we've gone through the budget and then realizing the amount of assessments that has gone up versus the rate and looking at that, the amount that it was increased, I sort of felt like we could reduce the rate. Also, I actually had one sense, but anything to help the citizen, I think, would be something that could be helpful to the people, to give back to them because we cannot control the assessment. We can't control the rate. So I do have some concern with that as well. Also, I know that we, in this budget, we have the water rates going up and the other rates going up with refuge collection and that is right much there that I have got some calls on as well. So I have some concern with that as well. Plus, I know that the schools have to have a budget to pass for the schools so that they can get the contracts out for teacher assignment for the coming year. So I know there is a deadline for having this approved. Mr. Manager, when is the deadline so we can get that to the schools?
Schools' deadline is May 15.
May 15.
So you would need to have a special meeting next week if you want to adjust us.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's the concern that I have with this, with moving forward. So it's tough and I've heard a lot from, a lot of emails, phone calls and whatnot about the tax rate. So it gave my attention too, what people were saying. So I do have some concerns with it and if I don't, if there's any way possible that we could reduce the tax rate, I would definitely be a part of that, doing that and would move forward with supporting that. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, like Councilman Johnson, have spent an awful lot of sleepless nights in consideration of the budget that has been presented. I also agree with Councilman Johnson when he says that this is probably one of the better budgets that we have seen put forward. The overall increase, I think, in the budget is about 8%. So if you take into account the increase in the population, the inflation rate and a couple of other factors, there's really nothing extravagant, I don't think, that is in this budget. Like Councilman Bennett said, we can't control the assessments. Perhaps we, I mean, obviously, we do have control over the, over the tax rate. But going back again to one of Councilman Johnson's comments, the uncertainty that the current environment that we live in, I, I think, calls for the city to be even more prudent with their resources than what they would ordinarily be. And what I would like to do is, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was April the 16th, there was a news article that appeared on WTKR where the city of Portsmouth had lost through cancellation in FEMA a $24.2 million infrastructure project to work on the dam over here in Suffolk at Lake Mead that is not in any danger of failing, but is, is in need of significant repairs. And if that's any indication of what is coming down from the federal government, I think the city of Suffolk itself can look forward to having a couple of anticipated revenue sources get canceled. It's not going to cancel the need for our infrastructure, but it is going to potentially eliminate some of our sources of funding. We heard earlier tonight about having to cancel the Kimberly Bridge project due to rising cost. We saw where the Godwin Boulevard double diamond interchange, is that right, Robert? Diversion diamond. That cost has doubled. The widening of the government, of the Godwin Boulevard has doubled. The widening of the bridge road has doubled. I don't think that any of the figures that in, that are in our CIP that go much past next year are probably worth the paper that they're written on. If we go back and look at particularly what happened with JFK, I think that's become our poster child for what construction costs have, what impact they have had on our ability to provide the services that we need to provide to the citizens of Suffolk. Is this budget at a 283 pages? Is it perfect? The obvious answer is no. I don't think you can, like I said with the comprehensive plan, I don't think you can have any document that covers 430 square miles and over 100,000 people not have flaws in it. But I think it's as honest and open a budget. I think our process is, is transparent as it can possibly be made. And with that, I will support the budget as it's presented. I've got members of, a lot of members of my own family that are probably going to vilify me for supporting the budget the way it is, but I believe that as an elected official up here on council, we're elected to be responsible not only for what is happening today, but also to look out for the future of this, of our city. And we've got a lot of uncertainty that's facing our future and we can look at the reserve funds that we have, but it's not going to take a whole lot, when project costs double, to strip them down to, to next to nothing. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would support this budget.
You making that a motion?
I'll, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we do have one motion for approval of the budget as presented. Councilmember Wright?
Just wanted to comment that I took the time and I made these comments last week to go through the budget. I am a strong advocate for the citizens of Suffolk. And I'll tell you that in looking at the budget and in going through it, I'll first start off by saying that I agree with Johnson, I agree with Bennett, and I do agree with Councilmember Richter as well, when they say that if there is a way for us to reduce it, I'm all for that. But this is probably going to be unpopular and it's okay. Unless there is a defined way for us to, and I like Mr. Webb, the way that you laid things out, and no pressure on our city manager, but if there's any way to make those numbers work, I, I'm all for it. But I did look at the budget and with everything going on, with some of the decisions that have been made by this council, the budget and the proposed building of our infrastructure and all of the things that we have in our budget are things that we need, even though I feel like it's coming up from the rear, but there are things that we need. It's the level of service that we need. We can't continue on the path we're going. We're behind the wheel when it comes to infrastructure. So we have to put forth the money in place to get that done, just to catch up. And so if there's a way to find the numbers that Mr. Webb so eloquently put together, I would be in support of that. But in looking at the services that we have, unless someone can show me exactly how we can get to that, I love everyone, but I don't see how we can continue to provide the services at the level that we need, at the rate that we're growing, at the rate that we need to catch up to the rapid growth we had, I, I don't see how we can get there unless someone can show me otherwise. But my heart is to, I would love to pay less. I would love for our tax rate to be lowered as well. But I don't see it unless someone can show me where we can offset what our services are and all of the improvements that we need to make. And I'm saying this from a place of being fiscally responsible. If we can find it, I support it, but as is, I don't see where the money is to support it and still get done everything we need to get done. I'm not going to second. I'm just saying that that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Counsel, questions, comments? Second, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to add my comments. I don't disagree with anybody. I think it would be, it would be great if we could give everybody a break. As Councilmember Wright just said, I think, you know, we all are also paying these taxes and we all work hard to make the money that our households depend on to pay these taxes. But I think we've, over the budget season, this has been going on for a while and we've asked the hard questions. Where can these cuts be made? Do we want to cut schools? Do we want to cut infrastructure? Do we want to cut our staff? You know, I, and I, I, I mean, we've asked the question over and over and over to the manager and to the finance department, is there any way to find this money? And I know the, the word on the street is that there's this giant surplus that we're sitting on this big pile of cash, but in reality, all of those funds are earmarked for infrastructure projects or school projects or, you know, fire and rescue and police. And, you know, we're, so we sitting up here are tasked with the responsibility of making sure we're spending the taxpayers' dollars in responsible ways and that we're also looking to a very uncertain future and making sure that the city's financial house is in good order to withstand whatever emergency or budget cuts or, you know, we don't know. We don't know what's coming down the pipe from the state and from the federal government. And so it's our responsibility, just like all of you and like all of us in our own households, we've got to be prepared for whatever might come next in a very, very, very uncertain economy. So I think our fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Suffolk and to the city and staff, it makes it very difficult to find anywhere that we can save any money in this budget. And while I, I would love to see a, a two or three cent, you know, reduction in the mill rate, I actually had a couple of citizens that said, you know, that, that doesn't really make a difference. You know, what would be nice is if we could reset the assessments to, you know, something pre-hot real estate market, but legally, we can't do that. That's all dictated by state code. So as much as I would love to find a way to make a reduction in the tax rate, I think we've asked, again, we've asked the question over and over again and the answer is, there's just really not a fair, responsible way to do that. And as unpopular as it may be, I will second the motion to approve the budget.
A second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Do we have any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll offer a few comments, trying not to get too long-winded or get off topic. Begin with, I appreciate the comments from citizens, Councilman Johnson, Bennett, your concerns as well regarding the effective tax rate, which has resulted from the rising property assessments. But I want everybody to be clear, I'm not in this council has not been insensitive to the tax burden our residents face because I pay it myself. Just to refresh everybody's memory, and I know it's not much, but... Just to refresh everybody's memory, and I know it's not much, but last year, we reduced the tax rate by two cents. The year before that, we provided tax relief of the same amount. The year before that, we reduced the rate by two cents. Doesn't sound like much, but every two cents is about $3 million and some change. And it's really at a time where not a lot of people were jumping up and down and yelling and screaming about it, but it was something that we felt like we could do. And we brought it up, and we brought it up at the right time. We brought it up when we started talking about, when we started talking about this budget, which was several months ago. And by doing so, we had the opportunity to direct the city manager to come back with a budget that would provide for a two-cent reduction in the mill rate, which gives him the opportunity to sit down with his staff and determine where that loss of funding, how that will be offset. They'll bring back an amended budget for us to consider. This is not the 11th hour, this is the 11th and a half hour. We have to have a budget approved by the 15th for the school system to get out their contracts. Now realistically, I mean, let's be real about it. A one penny or two penny decrease at this point would not break the back of the city. In a budget, even operating budget the size of ours, if you can't find a couple million dollars in it, then we can't do our job. My issue with, this is the 11th hour. For the folks, you know, we had a lot of discussion on this public hearing. The public hearing talks about the effective tax rate, but what people were talking about were their assessments. Those assessments were done several months ago. Everybody got, including me, and I get a lot of them, everybody got their assessment several months ago. So several months ago, you could compare your assessment this year to what it was last year and get an idea where you were going to be. If you had questions, you had the opportunity to go to the assessor's office to question that. And I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's an issue with assessments per se, because I believe our assessments, for the most part, are as accurate as you're going to get in any massive appraising system you could possibly have. And we have a department, our real estate assessor's department is unparalleled, as far as I'm concerned, in customer service. And very seldom do individuals not get the information they need. But if you don't like that information, you can go to the Board of Equalization, and if you don't like their decision, you can go to a circuit court. There is a way to do it. So my issue is not really a penny or two. I mean, a penny or two is something. You know, it was, you know, I thought it was when we've done it. I mean, I was elected to city council about 15 years ago. We never went down, everything went up, regardless of what assessments are. Well, I was proud to say in the last three years, you know, we did make things go down. The assessment, the assessments didn't go down, but the rate did. As has been mentioned, we do have a lot of needs. And we're throwing all these big numbers around about surpluses and excess money, you know, and I'll get back to it again, you know, our, we have four financial policies that need, if we're going to maintain our AAA bond rating, we need to adhere to them. One of them, the biggest one, is the 20% unrestricted reserve, which is based on our operating budget. That has not changed the last several years. We don't keep dumping money in that. But it does go up a little bit because the percentage of a higher budget is a little bit more. So we do add a little bit more to it. But that's our rainy day fund, the same way you have one, the state has one, the feds, unfortunately, don't have one, they just print more money, but we don't have the latitude to do that. So that is our city's rainy day fund. Now, what do we do with the other money? We talk about surpluses at the end of the year. Well, that hasn't been put in a safe deposit box for us to spend later. That money normally gets, the majority of it gets rolled over to the next year's budget in the form of cash. So when you look at your budget, you have your, your real estate revenue, the variable revenue and all your meals, taxes and incomes, and then your grants, but you also see money that is cash. That cash money, a lot of that is excess money from last year. So it just doesn't keep accumulating and go up into the ozone. If we didn't have it, we'd have to find a way to generate that same amount of income to satisfy the budget that we've developed. Now, we do have two other reserves. One of them is a contingency reserve. And I don't know if that was my brainstorm or not, but what is a contingency reserve? It's not a ton of money, but it's just enough money that if we had some type of catastrophe or something that affected our tax revenue for that year, rather than have to go back to the citizens and say, man, we had a really bad year. We didn't, we didn't have surplus, you know, we're short, so we need to raise our taxes right away so we can get more money into the operating fund. That's what we use that for. The capital reserve, when you look at the CIP or Capital Improvement Plan and you look at what's in there, just like Councilmember Rector alluded to, there's millions and millions, I mean, I mean, believe, I saw it in the newspaper. It was like, oh my God, the CIP is $2 billion. $2 billion, how are we going to come up with? Number one, the CIP, the only part that really counts is that first year that goes into your budget. But what I'm saying is, that's just a small look at what the needs are across the city. Be it 400-plus million dollars for new schools, you know, because we do have some aging schools. I mean, they're at about $430 million of the same. Everybody wants us to address the infrastructure. I want to address the infrastructure. I wish we could fix every road, add two lanes to every, put a stoplight wherever we need to, but the reality of it is, it all takes money. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of needs. Once again, we did reduce the rate to 111, from 111 to 107, we were already third lowest in Hampton Roads. We're still the third lowest in Hampton Roads. Chesapeake's just a few pennies behind us. Somebody mentioned to me that I think the only city that reduced their rate was Virginia Beach, and somebody told me they did two cents. Why can't you do two cents? Well, the flip side of that coin is their real estate didn't go up 4.7%. Their real estate went up 7.3%. 7.3%, not 4.7. So at 7.3%, I mean, I mean, that's a load. They absolutely should have done something. Plus, they have a latitude of generating money in different ways that we don't have. Virginia Beach can raise their mill tax a half of one penny, one half of one penny, and it increases revenue by over $9 million. For us to do that, we got to do, force that on a mill rate. So we got to kind of put it all into perspective. Another issue that I have is that unlike, even though we came through COVID, we came through COVID well, and we did a tax break, and we continue to do good, and we did a tax break, and we continue to do good, and we did a tax break. But this year, I've got a little bit of angst as to what's going on. Anybody reads the paper, anybody looks at the newspaper, I don't think there's anybody at any level of government, city, state, local, fed, or even global, that has a lot of faith in predicting what is going to come down the pipe this year. And because of that, I have a hard time doing it. Now, next year, all things being equal, and I'm not trying to stick my foot in my mouth, but you probably caught me on it, we should be in a position to do something if there's not anything out of the way. You know, we have to choose, the manager's budget, when you look at the manager's budget, he starts way back in December, January, has most of it done all right. He goes to all his department heads. Says, chief, how many fire engines do you need? Goes to Robert, Robert, how many dump trucks do you need? Everybody brings their needs. He goes to Parks and Rec, does the same thing. How many more bodies do you need? He gets a request for personnel, he gets a request for equipment, he gets requests for everything. And then he looks at the money and says, okay, what's really important? What can I get away with? What can we get away with? A lot of the extra money, when we say surplus money, a lot of that money in the end of the year is because we've been conservative budgeting revenue, because you don't know what it's going to be. A lot of our revenue is variable revenue. The only revenue you can count on is real estate revenue. That's fixed revenue. To a dollar, we can pretty much tell you what it is. But all that other stuff, meals tax, sales tax, lodging tax, who knows? If we have a downturn like we did at COVID, all that goes away. A lot of it goes away. So we've got to be conservative in, in what we're doing as far as income, and then we're also conservative as far as our expenses are concerned. From a citizen's standpoint, yeah, we get that money, but why is that? Did we spend everything we had? Would we be better off, the manager, we have $5 million, $8 million, $10 million left over the end of the year through vacancy savings? A lot of it's vacancy savings. When you look at the budget, and it calls for 1,400, 1,500 employees, you have to budget for 1,500 employees, even though you know you're probably never going to have all those positions filled at exactly the same time. The money needs to be in that budget. So at the end of the year, every hour of vacancy savings is in that number. So would we be better off from the citizen's standpoint if the manager said, hey, look at this, you know, we got another 30 days to go, and I'm sitting on an extra $10, $12 million, let me see if I can find something to spend it on? And we could certainly do that, but we don't do that. That money gets rolled into the next year. So just to give you a little bit as far as, you know, where these revenues come from. When you look at our budget, and Councilmember Wright mentioned it too, she looks at the budget, you look at the needs, when you look at that list up there, 58% of the budget goes to education and public safety. And that number only runs about 58 to 62%. Public safety and public education. When you look at how that money is allocated, I think it's a very fiscally responsible budget. I think it's equitable and responsible as far as the distribution of the resources we have, because it addresses our immediate needs, and I think it also looks at our long-term sustainability. And with all that said, as much as I would love to do a tax reduction at this rate, because I'm going to tell you, I loved doing it last year. I loved being able to do it the year before. I loved being able to do it the year before. I mean, there's nothing better than, hey, everything's looking pretty good. So, but this year just kind of scares me a little bit because it's just too much uncertainty, and hopefully I'm wrong. Hopefully it turns out to be a good year for us all the way around, because I can tell you, our commercial development, the buildings themselves, over the last four and a half years, we've put $2.7 billion worth of commercial real estate on the books. Commercial real estate, that generates almost $30 million worth of taxes on commercial real estate, not the backs of the taxpayers. And that's a significant swing, where our residential taxes were at that 26 or 7 number, and commercial was 19. Over the last four or five years, now it's flipped. Now residential taxes are the 19, 20, and the realist, and the commercial taxes are 27%, and that's who we want, put money into, into our coffers. So with that, I will get off my soapbox, and we have a motion on the floor for approval, got something long ago, I forgot. Councilman Rector, Councilmember Rector, seconded by Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved with a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay, we now move, we have an ordinance that was moved from the consent agenda to be considered, and that ordinance is to amend Chapter 38 of the Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of the City of Suffolk to coincide with the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code Act. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. At your work session this afternoon, City Council did receive a detailed staff report from the Fire Chief and also the Fire Marshal regarding the proposed amendments to Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City Code. As presented, the amendments will better reflect today's Department of Fire and Rescue and bring the code more in line with the Virginia State Fire Code and the International Fire Code.
Council, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. What's your pleasure? Councilmember Johnson?
Move to accept.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote.
And this is the amended ordinance, just for clarification?
As amended.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wright, would you like to comment before we vote?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on one sec, let me get you hooked up here. Okay, now you go.
Before we vote, I want to just make sure that it is clarified, because there seem to have been some uncertainty in the stance of the department as a whole as far as whether the changes to the fire code enhance the safety of our firefighters. And so I just need clarification before I cast my final vote, that the overall consensus is the changes do not weaken our current code and put our firefighters and our assets and other people's property at risk. I just need that assurance before I cast my vote.
Mr. Manager?
Fire Chief Rocky, would you like to address that?
Councilmember, thank you so much. To clarify, I would say that as a fire chief, I have the ability on any building that's on fire, through the code and certainly through the auspice of my wisdom experience, to place members of this fire department into any, into any building or situation or not to. And with that, suppression systems, not only defined by this International Fire Code and the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code, and certainly the amendments that we make in the Code of Suffolk, will never take away the ability for command officers, this fire chief, or anybody who operates, to make a decision to enter, not enter, engage, not engage, and protect the lives of the citizens and the firefighters that we, that we are provided the opportunity to protect. So with that, there's no situation can ever be defined by code nor by anything that's done here tonight. What's going to save, protect and provide is the wisdom of myself and the command officers. So to answer your question, no, I can't tell you whether this code right now will help protect anybody, because the commodities placed in the buildings, the fuels that are placed in there, their lithium ion batteries, the commodities that are unknown in any building will never be defined by this code. What will be defined by this code is my ability and the firefighters in this, in this building and on the streets to make wisdom or make decisions based on wisdom and experience. So no amount of anything that happens today will, will take away from that. What I will tell you, though, is the changes to this code in 2025 is more in line with where we need to be as a city, and the Fire Marshal made great points earlier, and I certainly support the Fire Marshal, Chris is right here on my left, on his concerns. They're valid. But also valid is that the, the way that we, the city, amend the International Fire Code and the Statewide Fire Prevention Code has to only be more strict than what is presented by the International and the Statewide Fire Prevention Code. And with that, I'm comfortable in my position that with the amendments here today that are presented to council, and with the wisdom, the training, the equipment that's supported by this budget, a first-class fire and rescue department that will suppress the fires to the point where we're not going to suppress them anymore when we get out, and will burn a building for three days if we have to, to save lives and save property, and the fact of some fires can't go out. So to answer your question is, I'm comfortable with what we're doing today, but I cannot guarantee you or anybody on council or any citizen that a piece of paper, this code right now, will enhance or not enhance the safety, because every fire is different. Every situation that Chief Buie and his officers go on are different. It's, I hope that's making sense to you, because reality is right now is what's going to save anybody, is the wisdom, the experience and the equipment, the ability to put a fire out. And sometimes, you know, the wisdom is that we're going to let it burn. And I say let it burn, we're going to do all we can, but we might burn something for three days, it's a reality, so.
Okay, but do the fire flow changes weaken or strengthen the code?
Weaken or strengthen, I, that's, again, that's a very difficult question. My opinion is, is that we have the resources we need based on this code to do our job. You know, the opinion of others may be different. I don't, I don't know how to... I don't, I don't know how to, to properly address that, because the, the Code of Suffolk is more stringent, the International Fire Code and the Statewide Fire Prevention Code. Could be. It can only be more stringent, it can't be less restrictive. The, the language that we went to ensures that we have municipal water available. If they cannot meet the fire flows in Appendix B, then they have to meet the fire flows by engineering. If they can't meet the fire flows by engineering, then their, then their permit is not provide, approved, and they don't build. So I just think that, I think it's a difficult question to place myself or others, because so much more goes into it. The water system's improving, uh, the, 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 the code that was written, uh, that we're amending right now, was 20-plus years ago, and it's time to revisit it. But, um, I, I think it's just a difficult stance to take right now of whether it's more restrictive or less when there's so much more that goes into it.
Thank you.
And I'm not trying to dodge your question, I'm trying to, you know, be as real as I can with you on that.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
My counsel, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Do we have any other questions or comments before we proceed to vote? All right, council members, prepare to cast your vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Wright voting in opposition.
Okay, we now move to resolutions. We have a resolution to adopt the Fiscal Year 2025-26 Annual Action Plan and Fiscal Year 252030 Consolidated Plan for the City of Suffolk's Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, and the Western Tidewater Home Consortium Home Investment Partnership Grant Program, Home. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, with us this evening is Deidre Garrett, our Community Development and Housing Grant Administrator. And I think this is probably her third presentation in the last three meetings on this. Deidre?
Yes. Good evening, City Manager, Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of council. Again, tonight, we're here about the adoption of the Fiscal Year 2526 Annual Action Plan and the draft of the 25, uh, Fiscal Year 2530 Consolidated Plan. Just a brief overview, uh, because we've been through this, but, um, the annual action play is, plan is our one-year funding horizon and strategic implementation document, identifying the specific uses for a CDBG and home funds. The CDBG grant is specific to the City of Suffolk, and home is administered on behalf of the Western Tidewater Home Consortium. This year is our Fiscal Year 252030 Consolidated Plan, which is a five-year funding horizon and the community development activities and resources allocated for a five-year period. It covers, I'm sorry, the City of Suffolk along with the Western Tidewater Home Consortium, how we propose to address housing and non-housing community development needs. Here are the areas of the plan. We are expected to have a final funding amount from HUD on May 14th, um, this year. So this is what the proposed allocation is, uh, but we will have that final number. So we're asking tonight that we adopt, uh, the draft, and then we'll submit it to HUD in June. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, hold on a sec, let me get. Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you. With all, all the, um, funds being cut, it, uh, with HUD and all that, have you got any indication the effect that it's going to have on Suffolk redevelopment and housing authority?
Not yet. We are still working with them, they're still in our budget to receive funding from us, but the direct HUD funding from Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, they should also know May 14th.
Okay, so after that, they're not going to answer that question, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to find out.
Before you sit down, let me ask anybody else, any other questions? Okay, we get you covered. All right, any comments? John, you sure? Any comments? Okay, hearing none, uh, we have a resolution that's been presented for your consideration. Councilmember Rector?
Uh, move to approve.
Got a motion for approval, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you.
Okay, we now move to staff reports. We do have one staff report this evening related to the Personal Property Tax Relief Program for the elderly and disabled.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Director of Finance, Charles Meek, will provide the staff report. Unfortunately, I hate to say, this is probably his last staff report. Charles is, um, is going to be leaving us here, um, eight o'clock in the morning. But, uh, I want to take the time to, uh,
He needs to leave before everybody wakes up.
I want to take the time to thank him for all the efforts he's done and the support he has given to all the staff, including myself, um, over the last many years. And I wish him the best, uh, in his new phase of life and hope that he becomes a boomerang and comes back.
Thank you. After your last meeting, uh, council directed the city manager to come back with a report, regarding the process and fiscal impact for developing a personal property tax relief for the elderly and disabled program. Looking at the State Code, uh, Sections 58.1 dash 3506, point 1 through 3506.7, provide localities with the authorization to establish a personal property tax relief program for the elderly and disabled residents of the city. Localities are able to levy a different rate, uh, of personal property for anyone at least 65 years of age, or anyone found to be permanently and totally disabled as defined, uh, in the State Code. The different rate may be applied to one automobile or pickup truck owned and used primarily by or for a qualifying applicant. Individuals and married persons are eligible if they or their spouse is at least 65 years old or permanently and totally disabled. The State Code lays out, uh, income and net worth restrictions, uh, for personal property tax relief programs. And they provide options for, for setting the income and net worth levels and guidelines. Localities may set lower income and net worth figures than provided by State Code Section 58.1, 3506.2. And localities may prescribe a maximum of town, amount of tax relief based on the assessed value of the motor vehicle or a formula which takes into account the income and net worth levels of the individual seeking the preferential tax rate. And looking at the options that are available for the State Code, for purposes of this presentation, we're, we're laying them out here. Option one, uh, is that you're able to establish a program and set the, uh, income level, uh, to total combined income cannot exceed $30,000. This is out of the State Code. The first $7,500 of income may be excluded by the locality. The net worth, uh, cannot exceed $75,000 excluding the value of the principal residence and land not exceeding one acre upon which it's located. The net worth shall include the present value of all equitable interest as of December 31st of the preceding calendar year. And exclusions may be provided for furniture, household appliances, and other items that are typically used in the home. Option two, uh, is that the income limits may be based on family size for metropolitan statistical areas published by HUD for housing assistance. The Fiscal Year 2025 HUD income limits are shown here. And generally, we're talking about a, a one-to-two person, um, that would qualify, uh, living in the home. And so you can see the income levels under this option are, are higher, at somewhere between 59, 650 and 68,200. And the net worth can be limited to $75,000, uh, no more than $75,000 excluding the house and, uh, land not exceeding one acre. Another option is provided for certain localities. The City of Suffolk, uh, is on that list. And that provides, uh, a maximum combined income of not exceeding $52,000. And a net worth not exceeding $195,000, less the, um, house and one acre of land. And then lastly, uh, option four is income limits based on family size for the metropolitan, uh, statistical area published by HUD, with a net worth not exceeding $195,000, excluding the house and one acre of land. Just to give you an idea of some of the other localities that have, uh, programs in place, in Hampton Roads, I was only able to find one, that's Virginia Beach. They've got their max, uh, income level set at, uh, $29,500. Their max net worth at $70,000 excluding the residence and one acre. And their alternative tax rate, uh, for those that qualify, is one millionth of one, uh, cent per hundred of assessed value. Fairfax County, Northern Virginia, uh, has their max income for, uh, 65 and older at $22,000, and disabled residents at $29,500 with, uh, net assets of $75,000. And the tax rate for qualifying individuals, uh, is one cent, uh, per hundred. Alexandria at, uh, $20,000 or less and $75,000, uh, net worth. They are one of the localities I've found that sets a max car or truck value. It has to be less than $30,000. And they set their tax rate at one cent, or the alternative tax rate. And then Loudoun County, uh, at $52,000 excluding up to $7,500 of disability income of a disabled owner, $195,000, uh, net worth. And they've got their rate set at $2.10 for those that qualify. A few others, Dinwiddie County, uh, sets it at $30,000 and, uh, provides, uh, the option of excluding the $7,500 for each relative other than the spouse living in the dwelling. They've got combined, uh, net worth of $75,000, and they provide a 100% exemption, um, for those that qualify. And then lastly, Falls Church at $20,000, uh, they exclude up to $8,500 for each relative other than the spouse. And up to $7,500, uh, if the person is permanently disabled, uh, of income, uh, $150,000 combined assets. And their alternative tax rate, uh, they really, they didn't have a tax rate, they show a maximum, uh, car tax relief of $25. The other, uh, item that, that council asked to address was the fiscal impact. And I can tell you, I mean, this is pretty difficult to project, because we don't have, uh, a whole lot of data, um, available. And so one scenario that we looked at was taking, uh, the current participants in the real estate tax relief program, uh, at 100% exemption. But the parameters of our real estate program and what's available under the State Code for personal property are, are quite a bit different. Our income levels for, uh, real estate are set at $66,693, uh, max income, and, uh, $338,000, uh, of net worth. So assuming that, uh, the individuals with the max income of the $66,000 or less, there's 1,203, uh, participants currently in the program. If they had an average car value, uh, of $10,000, the financial impact to the city would be about $347,000. If the average car value of those participants is 15, 15,000, 20,000, and 30,000, you could see, uh, it ranges anywhere from 521,000 all the way up to over a million dollars. Looking at this scenario, this does not account for any renters that would qualify, uh, for the program. And approximately 25% of the, the people 65 and older in the city with max incomes of the $66,693 or less, uh, are participating in the real estate tax program. Second scenario, we, uh, looked at, uh, taking some Census Bureau statistics for, uh, those age 65 and older households with incomes less than $60,000 and a 100% exemption. The income threshold is slightly lower than the HUD guidelines, but this was kind of the data point that, uh, the Census Bureau, uh, laid out. And assumes that all eligible participants will meet the net worth criteria, whether it's set for $75,000 or $195,000. But it does not account for potential, uh, disabled program participants. I could not find, um, any good data for, uh, those, uh, disabled persons in the community, you know, based on income levels. But there are 4,632, an estimated 4,632, uh, people's age 65 and older in households with incomes of less than $60,000. With, took an average vehicle value range of 10,000 to 30,000. And if all of those program, or all of those people, uh, applied and qualified with the net worth guidelines, you're looking at anywhere from 1.3 to $4 million of financial impact. And then lastly, uh, taking the Census Bureau statistics and lowering the income threshold to less than $30,000, and setting a net worth criteria at $75,000. According to the estimates from the Census Bureau, there's 2,225, uh, citizens that, that meet that criteria, uh, with a max income of 30,000. And so the financial impact with those average value ranges, uh, anywhere from 643,000 to 1.9 million. Staffing, uh, the Department of Social Services currently screens applicants for the Real Estate Tax Relief Program using part-time staff and speaking with them. It's anticipated that additional staffing would be needed, uh, for, for social services to take on, uh, the personal property tax relief endeavor. You know, based on, uh, the State Code requirements and looking at, um, the data that we do have in terms of potential financial impact and those in the community that would potentially qualify, the staff recommendation is to, uh, set the maximum income at $30,000 and a net worth of $75,000 excluding the principal residence of one acre. And establishing a $30,000 maximum vehicle assessed value, uh, or less to qualify for the, um, for the tax relief. And then, uh, setting an alternative, alternative- And then setting an alternate, alternate rate at a doll, one cent per hundred dollars of assessed value. This kind of would keep the city in line with those other communities that we showed you a few slides ago. And, you know, this would give you an opportunity, you know, to establish the program, maybe take a year or two and see how it goes, and then if you would like, then come back and adjust the income or net worth requirements or make other adjustments. The next steps, if council desires to move forward, would be to finalize what you would like the income and net worth requirements to be and some of the other program parameters. And then this would require a code amendment to establish the personal property tax relief program, similar to the, the real estate program that's established in the city code. And with that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Meek. Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Rector. Mr. Meek, I have just a couple of questions. The first one is, when you look at the property tax relief, you know, obviously, it's just one household. Does your, do your calculations take into account that there might be more than one automobile in, in these particular houses, or is it assuming one automobile per household?
It, it is not. From what I understand, they can decide which vehicle, you know, if they own multiple vehicles.
So it would just be one vehicle?
It would only be one vehicle.
Okay.
And if you wanted to, you could set a max limit on, you know, what would qualify in terms of a vehicle assessed value.
And then my other question is, reducing the rate to a penny per hundred on a thirty-thousand-dollar car, just did a little bit of math, and hopefully, my phone calculator is working, is three dollars. I mean, does that create more of an administrative? I mean, that's barely covers the cost of a stamp to send out the bill. So, I mean, would it make more sense to just, just simply eliminate it, or can you, or does it have to be something on the books?
I believe it says that it has to be a rate, so you're gonna have to have a rate, and you're gonna have to send a bill.
Okay.
I don't think you can just say...
The rate can't be zero.
Well, it can be zero, but you're still gonna send a bill for the...
You're still gonna send a bill. No way around getting bureaucracy, is there? All right. Thank you, Mr. Meek. And by the way, good luck to you.
Thank you.
As a council member, it's been a pleasure working with you. You've always been available to me. Sometimes I have trouble following lines of authority, and I come directly to you rather than through the city manager's office, but you've never refused to either take my call or answer my request or provide me with the information that I have. So thank you for what you've done for the city of Suffolk, and I know wherever you're going, we'll be better for having you there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, I, I'd like to make a motion to the, to have the city manager to make an amendment to adopt the personal property tax relief program for the elderly and the disabled.
Vice Mayor, on what level?
For, per recommendation.
The recommendation. Okay. Here we go, a motion on the floor from Vice Mayor Ward to have the manager come back with an ordinance regarding the tax abatements for the elderly and disabled based on the guidelines that we got. Councilmember Williams?
Second, ma'am.
We got a second from Councilmember Williams. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Councilmember Rector?
Just real quick, from having made the motion to have this investigated, I enthusiastically supported and look forward to voting yes for it.
Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Let's see, we have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five at four P M., unless canceled by the mayor and the city manager, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Williams?
So moved.
A motion for approval, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wright, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers, and if so, please explain the guidelines.
We have no individuals registered as non-agenda speakers this evening.
We'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We do have additions to this evening's agenda. The following individuals have been nominated for appointment to the respective boards, commissions, or committees, starting with the Downtown Advisory Committee, Amy Birdsong, Ross Boone, Lula Holland, Ryan McCormley, and Anthony Van Dyke. The Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Holy Net Borough, the nominee is Justin Nelson. We also have nominations for the Virginia Municipal League Twenty-Twenty-Five Policy Committees. The Community and Economic, Economic Development Committee, Vice Mayor Ward. The Finance Committee, Councilmember Rector. The General Laws Committee, Councilmember Wright. The Human Development Education Committee, Councilmember Bennett. And the Infrastructure Committee, Councilmembers Butler Barlow and Councilmember Williams.
Council, motion would be in order. Councilmember Bennett?
Move for...
A motion for approval, Councilmember Bennett, Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Before moving on, do we have any other new business that would like to be brought up by any members of council for consideration? Councilmember Bennett?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to offer a motion to allow in-home food production. I move that the Planning Commission be requested to recommend amendments to the Unified Development Orders to allow the production of food items that are permitted by Section three-point-two dash five-one-three-zero-C of the Code of Virginia to be prepared in a private home without a state inspection as its home occupation. That is the motion.
Can we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Bennett? Do I have a second? Councilmember Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Do we have any questions or comments? No further discussion?
Mayor, if I may ask one question. Councilmember Bennett, was that for non-sale at the location?
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Do we have any other new business for consideration? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission be requested to review and recommend any amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding requirements for the M U D zoning districts and amending, and, and amending an M U D zoning district.
Can we get a motion on the floor from Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Wright. Do we have any further discussion? There's no discussion of the motion. Councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Before moving on to announcements and comments, do we have any other new business that needs to be brought forward? Hearing none at this time, we'll ask if Communications Director Jennifer Moore has
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. We'll start the announcements off tonight with news from the Economic Development Department as they celebrated the one-year anniversary of the Sparrow's Nest in the Governor's Point area with a commercial, excuse me, with a ceremonial ribbon-cutting. The Sparrow's Nest specializes in Virginia-grown and handcrafted items from local artists and farms such as jewelry, pottery, kitchenware, and mugs. For more information on the storefront, check out their website at sparrowsnestssuffolk.chop. Suffolk Parks and Rec is excited to share that on April twenty-sixth, community members gathered at Downtown Festival Park to participate in a meaningful event celebrating Arbor Day. City officials celebrated Arbor Day by planting a young tree in the new park, symbolizing the commitment to the environment. And Suffolk Tourism is pleased to announce that the Suffolk Farmers Market has been awarded a gold certification from the Virginia Farmers Market Association. This achievement acknowledges the market as a leader in best practices, community service, and support for local agriculture. The Virginia Certification, Certified Farmers Market Program ensures consumers can rely on the market as a safe, welcoming, and transparent local food source. Also, in the spirit of community and collaboration with the Suffolk Christian Fellowship Center, the Suffolk Farmers Market is excited to introduce the Giving Box, a new food drive initiative to assist local families experiencing food insecurities. Market visitors and vendors can now donate food and other essential items each week to help replenish the downtown Suffolk Food Bank and community pantry directly at the Farmers Market. For more information, check out visit SuffolkVA.com. And Suffolk Public Works Department wants to remind motorists that paving work is currently underway on Route Fifty-Eight as part of the Holland Road Widening Project, and drivers should expect some delays in the area through mid-June. For the latest updates and more information on the project, please visit SuffolkVA.us. Keep Suffolk Beautiful and the Suffolk Art League is excited to share that the Twenty-Twenty-Five Suffolk Earth and Arts Festival brought together thousands of community members to celebrate creativity, sustainability, and local culture right here in the heart of downtown. On April twenty-sixth, the festival offered an impressive array of handcrafted arts, eco-friendly goods, and local produce from over a hundred and thirty-five vendors. The streets were alive with the sound of local bands, and families enjoyed face painting, games, and educational exhibits. For more information on the event, visit SuffolkVAEarthandArts.com. Suffolk Public Libraries has released a new family resource, the Family Guidance Toolkit for Military Deployment. This toolkit is a part of their growing Family Guidance Toolkit series, designed to support children and caregivers through life's most challenging moments, providing emotional support and practical guidance. Developed in partnership with the nationally-recognized Comfort Crew for Military Kids, the toolkit helps families navigate the challenges of military deployment and reunification. The toolkit is available at library locations, and for more information, visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com. And get ready to experience the world right here in downtown Suffolk. Suffolk Parks and Rec is hosting the inaugural International Fest on Saturday, May seventeenth, from eleven A M. to five P M. at the Downtown Festival Park. This free, family-friendly event celebrates global culture through music, dance, food, and a vibrant community spirit. Attendees can enjoy live performances from a diverse lineup, including the Peanut City Cloggers, Colombian dancers, steel pan jam, Mexican folklore entertainment, kung fu demonstrations, and the highly, the high-energy Tumbo Sausalero Band. You'll also have a chance to taste delicious dishes from various international food vendors. For more information, visit SuffolkParksAndRec.com. And I'm excited to share the highlights from the Suffolk Public Library's Ninth Annual Iconicon, held on Saturday, May third, at the North Suffolk Library. This free, family-friendly event brought together fans of sci-fi, fantasy, comics, and anime for a day of fun and community. Attendees enjoyed various activities, including gaming and tournaments, cosplay contests, fan art displays, and live performances. The event also featured local vendors and food trucks, offering something for everyone. And as you can see from the pictures, Iconicon continues to be a cornerstone event celebrating creativity and bringing our community together. The City of Suffolk's Public Safety Committee encourages residents to use a public, public safety portal, an online platform where residents and business owners can share suggestions for improving community improvements and addressing non-emergency public safety concerns. This portal is not for reporting crimes or emergencies, so in case of an immediate assistance, please dial nine-one-one. You can submit your feedback to the portal anonymously if you wish, and the Public Safety Committee reviews all suggestions to help guide future safety initiatives in Suffolk. For more information about the Public Safety Committee and to access the portal, visit SuffolkVA.us. And of course, on your screen are the various ways residents can stay connected to the City of Suffolk. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you much, very much, Ms. Moore, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to announcements from council, and we're gonna start with Councilmember Wright. Hold it, let me get you turned on here. Got to go to the new screen, see where you are. Hmm. Go to the next one. Help me, Mr. Manager, do you see Councilman Wright up there? She's gotta be there somewhere. Here we go. I love this new system. Okay, you're on.
Okay, so, good evening. So this evening's proclamations honoring our Public Works Week, Police Officer Memorial Week, our Drinking Water Week, and Foster Care Month serve as a powerful reminder of the central roles that sustain and uplift our community. Regarding the real estate tax rate and our budget, I am someone who is directly impacted by the uncertainty of our federal government right now. And looking through everything and weighing things out, as a good steward and someone who takes my role very, very heavy, it's very important to me. It was a hard decision for me tonight to, to vote against lowering the tax rate, but I'll tell you, I believe with all of my heart that I made the best decision for the citizens of this city, and I hope and pray that that is respected and understood. I'm never gonna say anything to you that I don't believe is true, and I'm never going to make a decision without doing my homework. And so for that, I'll say, with the uncertainty of our federal government and with all of the services that our city needs, I voted with my heart and with my brain. I want to acknowledge the continued support of city staff in ensuring the voices of Sleepy Hole Borough residents are not only heard, but reflected in action. I'm never gonna get tired of praising our staff, even when I disagree on a position. I cannot get anything done without you, and I appreciate you, and I need you to know that. I'm gonna close this evening with this one comment. Let wisdom be your constant companion and understanding your trusted guide. These will keep you on a steady path. And with that, I say goodnight.
Thank you. Councilmember Rector. Phew, hold on a second. Got you.
All right, there we go. First off, I want to thank all the people that came and spoke this evening regarding the assessments and, I guess indirectly, our budget. I hope, even though the budget passed the way it was presented and a drop in the mill rate was not, not done, that you can appreciate the fact that we all up here took and take our responsibility to be stewards of the taxpayers' money fairly seriously, very seriously. And I'd echo what Mrs. Councilperson Wright just said, there is a lot of uncertainty, and we need to guard against the potential impacts of that uncertainty. And, Mr. Webb, thank you for showing up. I'll still keep, even though we disagree on the budget, I'll still keep your dog this weekend and continue to bring your daughter animal crackers. It's been kind of slow...
Councilmember Rector, if you want to be mean, keep the dog.
Can, do I now?
If you want to be mean, keep the dog.
You know, I would if my wife would let me, because it, it's an adorable Cavalier King Charles spaniel that does, wants nothing more than just to... Charles spaniel that does, wants nothing more than just to sit in your lap and have his head petted and ask for very little in return. I did attend the one-year anniversary of the opening of The Sparrow's Nest. It's a unique little shop up there off of Route 17, Governor's Point, and they have a lot, a lot of unique stuff. I got really lucky and found a couple of nice little anniversary presents for my wife while I was up there, and I congratulate them. You know, in a small, little business like that, the first year is probably very much the toughest, and for them to have survived it and plowing into their second year is a real credit, not only to the quality of the merchandise that they carry, but also, you know, their careful planning and actually laying out their business plan. See, last week, I attended the retirement party here at City Hall for Shirley Sneed from the Treasurer's Office, forty, forty-five, forty-six years? Forty-three?
Forty-plus.
Forty-plus, a long time. And I know that she is going to be very much missed by Ron Williams and the rest of the folks in the Treasurer's Department. I attended the prayer breakfast, I guess, when was that, Monday, last week?
So is a Thursday.
Yeah, but anyway, that was a great event, as always. It's, you know, you reflect every now and then that you don't think your life is going well, and then you hear some of the stories that we hear in an event like that, and, you know, you just, you know, almost want to immediately just fall down and thank the good Lord for the providence that He has allowed you to be delivered into the position that just about every American is in. I attended earlier in the week the ribbon cutting for the Bon Secours Medical Center. That is a fantastic facility. As I jokingly said, probably, though, the next time that I'm in that facility is going to be on a gurney, looking up at the ceiling, which I hope is not anytime soon, but if it does happen, I feel like I will be very, very well taken care of. And I'm sorry to have missed the Arbor Day thing, but my wife and I were celebrating our 40th wedding anniversary, and I think for the future of my family life, that was probably a better way to spend my time than digging a hole and planting a tree. So I hope I'll be forgiven for that. And with that, I will say good night.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to offer my condolences to Bishop Wallace Johnson for the loss of his sister, and I wanted his family to know that I will keep them in prayer. On Tuesday, April 22nd, I attended the Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance 49th Annual Revival. That was a great, great event, great service. On May 1st, I attended the Suffolk Leadership National Day of Prayer along with other council members. Like Councilman Richter said, you know, when you hear other people's stories, you realize how blessed you are truly, that we are truly, we are truly blessed. So, you know, I'm not sure how many years they've been having it, but it's just a great event. On May 2nd, I attended the Hampton Road Chamber, Portsmouth State of the City, along with other council members and the mayor, and I must say that Portsmouth's got a lot going on right now. My word for the month of May is gratitude, the quality of being thankful, the readiness to show appreciation for and to return kindness. I would also like to take this opportunity to wish all of the mothers Happy Mother's Day, and with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, Councilman Richter, the Sparrow's Nest is in Chuck-Tuck Borough. I know you have a hard time saying that. Was great to be at their one-year anniversary, and it's a really unique little shop, and I need to go back because the line was too long, but I'm looking forward to going back. That's a really unique little commercial area, lots of interesting shops and things to do, and way up in the north end of town, so don't forget about us up there. I want to thank everyone that came out tonight, all the folks, the recognitions, the different weeks that we're celebrating during May, and thanks to all the staff that came out to be recognized for those, and also for all the speakers that came out. You know, we had a hard decision to make tonight. I don't think any of us is happy and excited about it, except that we have passed a budget, and that's a good thing, but we, we're, we will probably get some pushback from folks that don't think we did the right thing. I just think that we're all in such an unpredictable and uncertain time. It's not a time to make a lot of changes. We kind of need to stay the course, and I feel like that's what we did tonight. I'd like to say, I know way too many families that are dealing with really difficult things right now, either difficult diagnoses or loss of family members, and I just, without naming names, our thoughts and prayers are with you as you go through this process of grieving and mourning, and just, we've all been there, and we all will be there again. And I will add to that, that I think during this stressful time, every day brings a new wave of uncertainty and of stress, and if everybody can just take a minute and be kind to one another and support one another, it would make life better for everybody. It's not hard to do, share, smile, and a kind word, and we're all going to get through this together. And finally, because I always have to, don't forget it's planting season, planters are rolling, the corn is in the ground and up, looks great. I think peanuts are well underway, soybeans, and a lot of folks have started planting cotton. We have not yet, but we're poised and ready to go. But if a big piece of equipment is on the road in front of you, enjoy the scenery. We'll be out of your way in a minute. If you meet us coming, just pull off in a driveway, let us get by, and nobody gets hurt, so. But it's a, it's a busy time of year, and it's an important part of what we do here in the city, so everybody just be careful out there. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you. First, I would like to just start out by saying I do appreciate all the people that came out tonight and had the comments, and I understand what they were saying, and I have that, their concerns at heart. And with the budget, I know one of the things that I was very concerned about was the school budget. I know they have to get the contracts out, where the teachers will be able to, they can try to keep the teachers on staff, and also, I know that's very important to them, so that was a tough one they had to not vote for because of, they need to get those contracts out. And I know we will still look at concerns that people brought forward, and in any kind of way that we can, we will be addressing those in days to come. If there are any way that we can make any changes, I feel like Council will do that. So it was not easy, it's a lot going on, and as everyone has stated, is this is a trying time, no one knows what tomorrow's going to hardly bring, so we have to sort of play it by ear and wait to see what's coming down to the state and to the locality, so we have to be prepared for whatever might be coming down. And see, one of the things I really have some concern with, I didn't want to get into it too much with social service tonight, but with the, some of the programs that is being cut is going to have a lot of effect. If you look at the numbers here that he was giving about tax relief and all, that tells you it's a lot of people in Suffolk that are hurting. And if in any kind of way that we might have to step up to play to do whatever, I'm afraid somebody, some of these kids are going to be going hungry, and that's, that really concerns me, that if they cut all the programs out, what's going to happen to some of these kids that actually go to school, hungry, looking for that meal, and that's the only meal that they'll probably get, is at the school? And if we take that away, what's going to happen to that child? And I, it just touches my heart when I hear things like that, and my concern is really about those young kids and their future and how they will be able to survive and not be out of West Side Water Regional Jail. And we're going to feed them out there. It's better to feed them rather than to have them out in the jail fielding. It's to feed them some kind of way that we can try to help them. So I just had to bring that up because it's really, it really bothers me, and when she was talking about the number of children that doesn't have home, doesn't have any place to stay, and they're looking for places for kids to be placed. And I think all, I can speak for myself, I have a touch in my heart when I see and hear those types of things happen around me. The other thing I want to say, I'm not going down a list about all the places that I attended, but one thing I did would really say, the new hospital, the Bon Secours, that is a jewel. That is a state of the art. I've never seen equipment in any hospital that I, they said this first one, I think, that have a lot of the equipment in there, and if I had to go to one, which I hope I don't, that would be a good place to go because they really, really has the top of the line equipment there to take care of the patients there. Also, I would like to just say that Mother's Day is coming up Sunday. It's going to be hard on a lot of people this time of year when Mother's Day come about. And you that have a mother, I don't have to tell you how much you should appreciate and show that love to that mother. I just hope that people will have a great relationship and enjoy their mother while they can. And with that, I will say good night.
Councilmember Johnson.
I was going to be brief, but maybe I'm not going to be brief all of a sudden. I actually attended the prayer breakfast this year for the first time in three years, and I have to say, I was so impressed. My, kudos to the committee that put it together. The program was excellent, the music was excellent, everything about it was excellent. The only thing, I always leave things thinking, what could we do better in this city? We need a facility in this city to have these prayer breakfasts in and to have our graduations in and to have our, it's something I'd like to see us work on for the very near future, is to have a facility that we can do these things in, because it was wonderful, but it could have been more wonderful if we'd had, if it had been big enough. Chief, I am so pleased that the Police Memorial Week goes on every year. Kudos for that, too, because it's an excellent, excellent thing, and it brings, reminds us of all these wonderful people that we've had in our city that aren't here anymore. Paul Rattell, thank you for giving us water to drink. I thank you every day. We do have good water standards. I think that was a good thing, that, and give a little to our water department. And same to Public Works, of course, they always, we acknowledge them. Like Ms. Barlow was saying earlier, it's been a tough week. It's been a tough week in Holy Neck. We've, we have lost so many people and family members, I can't even give you a list, but there's a couple that I just have to mention, because it's our own Harold Falk, Harold and Carrie Falk lost a daughter. My heart just bleeds for them. They are such wonderful people and a huge part of our community. Barbara Bosman passed away yesterday. Again, she's been a steward in our community, a matriarch of our community for so long. David Peace, a dear friend of mine, passed away. Corky King used to run in the trailer park up there, worked here at the Hilton. I mean, it goes on and on. Dan Holly, you know, Trash Man, Dan Holly, his funeral's tomorrow. But, and that's just a few, there's so many more. So be conscious of your neighbors and your friends and how people are leaving us, and we just need to recognize each other and love each other. One more thing, 58, I just told Robert today the grass was cut, it looks so dang good. Now, if we just get the darn road finished, please be careful on 58. It is still not ready for primetime yet, so go slow, go 35, there's a lot of construction, they're pouring asphalt. Hopefully by June, they're saying we're going to be done, so we're looking very forward to that. Meanwhile, don't take anything for granted, be very, very careful. Mother's Day is Sunday, don't forget your mom, living and dead. I miss mine so much still, and she's been gone for 12 years, but your mom is one of the most important people in your life. With that, I'll say good night.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Oh, yes, Councilman Barlow, about Governor's Point, you wasn't there, but you got another store there, I think you go ahead and visit them. The name Gritson Grace Counseling, you know, with kids and adults, and the owners are Christie and Brian, and they welcome, not only me, but they're so proud to be moved in the city of Suffolk, in your area. So if you get a chance, think, go and meet them at the ribbon cutting. Also went to SEMA 49th Family Anniversary, like they always put on, a good religious time, so I agree with Councilman Williams, it was an awesome time. As a matter of fact, and also this Sunday, I visited Nazman River Baptist Church and was, was impressed with the teaching they had, so they probably will see me again. Charles, good luck to you, glad to see Ms. Moore back, and Ms. Shirley Sneed, she was very professional. Every time that I had to deal with her in the Treasurer's Department, she was, will be missed, she, she of brightness and very professional, friendly, and get you, get a job done for you. Well, well, Councilman Wright, me, you can feel good about Bon Secours, because that's in our area, so. And I'm glad of that, and it was a good, I was kind of late, but I was there, and I'm glad I went, because I met a lot of people that I have talked to over the, over the years, so I'm glad to see that up there, and we do have some good medical buildings up that way. I have a couple of doctors that I attend up there. So with that, like I said, Happy Mother's Day to the mothers, and I will say God bless.
Yes, absolutely. Let me get you turned on. Okay, there you go. I missed two items. Suffolk Earth and Arts Festival, holy monoly. If you didn't go, you missed an amazing event that our city should be so proud of. I want to thank Keep Suffolk Beautiful, the, our Parks and Rec participated as well, Suffolk Art League. I hadn't been before. It was the most amazing thing I've ever been to, in downtown Suffolk. The vendors were excellent, the public was there, I've never seen so many young people. We really, we're hitting it big with this one, so I hope this is the way our festival's going to be in the future. So please put on a calendar to go. And then I would be remiss if I didn't simply say, I'm proud of the budget. Because I didn't vote for it is because my philosophy is, and everybody kind of knows what my philosophy is, we need to give back whenever we can to the people of this city. And that is my philosophy, and that's what I will stick to. I'm a taxpaying citizen, too, and I respect the fact that people are so concerned. Might we need the money? Sure, but might the citizens need help as well? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, that's what I think, that's how I feel, but I do respect the manager, he knows that, I respect our staff, we have an amazing staff, and they deserve to be well compensated, and this money will be put to good use on a building of the center. But I'm just saying, there's so many things we can do, but don't think for a minute because I oppose something that I don't support it, because I do. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and finish it up. Just a few things I did, I had the pleasure of going on the 22nd of April to go to, Massimo Zanetti had a tour of their facility, and I was embarrassed after all these years, close to 50 years, going up down 58 and smelling the coffee. I never really went back there and ever looked at the building before. But it's kind of, it's behind some trees, and it's just a massive facility that is very well done on the inside, and they process, I don't know, how many, like 22 tons of coffee a month? I mean, it's just an unbelievable amount of coffee. Gets shipped in there, the raw beans, and they come from, oh, Lord, Vietnam, Cambodia, Mexico, Nicaragua, whom I'm missing? I'm missing somebody. They come from everywhere. You know, and there's so many different types of beans, decaffeinated beans, caffeinated beans, and they grind them all up right there, and they supply a lot of the really large suppliers. And we, they wouldn't let us take pictures of who they are, but I guess I'll say it anyhow. They do all the Dunkin' Donuts coffee, they do all the W-. They do all the Dunkin' Donuts coffee, they do all the Wawa's coffee, that's insane, all that coffee you see out there, and who else?
Kirkland Costco.
Costco coffee? I mean, it's amazing, and it's right there in the heart of our city, been there longer than, it's really one of the first, you know, them and Lipton, I guess, are two of the largest manufacturers that we have, and of course, planters, but just amazing. They've got coffee testers that literally are bodies that sit around a table, and you sip a little coffee, then you spit it out, and you get some more, so they, you're constantly, they don't spit it back in there, they just, you know, just to taste it, and it's just amazing, that's what they get paid to do, you know, don't worry about it, it's fine. So anyhow, I'll move on from that, very, very impressive. I too attended the Suffolk Interdenominational, do you get that? Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial, that's like 127 syllables at one time, Alliance City Revival. It's, and I've attended quite a few over the years, and it's very uplifting, and they do a great job, and they do a lot for our city. The Arbor Day Festival Park, Councilmember Johnson, you're exactly right, the Earth and Arts Festival was off the chart, I went last year, and I think last year was the first year that we had it downtown, because before that, we had it at Westminster at the church, and I was a little concerned when I heard they were moving it downtown from Westminster, because it's a little different venue, but it was awesome, because it also afforded the opportunity for the vendors to be there and for the shop owners to open their doors. And we got a little bit of taste of what we could do, maybe with the SunTrust Bank Building, because that's when we get to open it up, and there wasn't a whole lot in there, but it was tough for the kids to do, and it was packed. So it just, it was just a really great day, perfect weather, good job, staff, manager, all your folks put together, killer, police presence was there, I mean, I'm not, I don't think we had any issues, but, you know, everybody was happy. That's what I liked, everybody was happy that was there. Citywide Prayer Breakfast was a, it was a pretty good, you came to a good one, because some of those prayer breakfasts, a couple of them, I was there praying that they'd be over pretty quick, so, but this was, this was a good one, it really was a good one. And most importantly, it was the first time ever, we, it's not that funny, it's the first time ever that it wasn't a morning at 7:00 in the morning after a council meeting, you realize that? It's on a Thursday, it's always a Thursday morning, but this year, the Lord blessed us with five Wednesdays, so we didn't have to stay in a council meeting until 10:00 at night, and wake up at 6:00 to go to a prayer breakfast, but they did a great job. Bon Secours Grand Opening, you're exactly right, this place is off the chain, I mean, you need to look at it, it's like Star Trek. I mean, I get all this AI technology, all those little whiteboards that they have in hospital rooms, all that's digital, they can push a button, and all of a sudden, an observation window becomes opaque where you can't see through it. It's got such things, if you're a patient and you're a subject to falling, that when you get out of the bed, they'll program that in there, and if someone who has a falling issue gets out of the bed, it automatically goes to the nursing station and they're right there. So it's just amazing, the technology, but it gives us another, there's 16 beds and four operating rooms, and those operating rooms are geared to accommodate just about any type of procedure, so, I mean, I think we're really blessed to have that asset and add into the city along with what we already have, which is obviously Centerra, they might could take anything away from there, because they, I went last Tuesday with one of the pups to do the therapy dog thing, and that place was packed, I mean, I couldn't even find a parking spot hardly, but we had the National Nurses Week breakfast was there, and I went there and just same thing, great group of people. Unfortunately, I heard that our president, their president, David Masterson, they kind of consolidated some positions, and he's going to be leaving, and that guy's awesome. You know, so I'm not sure who, I don't think they're going to replace him with anyone, but someone's going to take over that hospital, and I wish him all the well, I wish him well in whatever he does. Speaking of wishing people well, Charles, you still out there? You know, I do appreciate everything you've done, the opportunity that I've had to work with you, your dedication to the city. If you were closer, I would throw something at you for leaving, but my arm's not that good, it might have been a long time ago, not now, but we really are going to miss you, and I've already fussed at both the individuals, the mayor and the city manager over there have already heard my wrath in regards to stealing you from our city. But maybe, just like the manager said, you'll pop back in here one day and say, you know, let me come back home, and believe me, we'll be welcome. We got a lot done tonight, we had a lot of good comments, we had citizens come up, I mean, we passed the budget, we talked about tax relief, we've got a motion going in to address the mixed-use development ordinance, because that's what we do, we learn through our experiences, we encounter something we've never encountered before, we have the latitude to do what we need to do, even though it might go against the grain a little bit, so what we do is we look at it, say, hey, that didn't make much sense, let's fix it so next time we don't have the issue. So things are going, that's how it's supposed to work, it's always supposed to work like that, if we can. We got tax relief coming for the elderly and disabled under property tax. So anyhow, and we had some good discussion on some other things. So with that, my little quote of the night is from LBJ, not my favorite president, but it's an LBJ quote, and that is, it's not my favorite, that is, "You know, you know, doing what is right is easy. The problem is knowing what is right." And with that, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
We have Councilmember Wright.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion for adjournment, Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Williams.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilmember Williams, so same discussion of the motion. Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.